Here, Mr. Green.
Here.
Your mayor?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Trainer?
Here.
Mr. Rina here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the borough's home news and current news file with municipal clerk and posted on municipal bulletin board on December 3, 124. I apply little pieces to the body. And it's been doing.
Other say this is one day. Indivisible.
Did you notice what I did yesterday when we did the pledge? And there was a whole group of kilometers and they were just so precious to this pledge. They were racing through it. They just be like really like so proud and yeah, it's very. Welcome to the May 27th, 2025 meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall and is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the local clerk. Comments containing offensive, plain or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk. Remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the extro and extort if they're not there three minutes of a lot of time or if they make any inappropriate or abusive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name, address, and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any actions taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Okay. I am thrilled to have two presentations to do. And I'm going to read this proclamation for Nina Dixon. Whereas Rosina Nina Dixon, a longtime Burnsville resident, purchased property located at 207 North Finley Avenue for the sole purpose of providing affordable housing in the borough. And whereas Nina Dixon, at her own expense, rehabilitated two apartments at 207 North Finley Avenue. And whereas Nina Dixon worked with the boroughs without local consulting to qualify the two units so that they count toward the borough's affordable housing obligation at a minimal expense to the borough. And whereas, as a result of Nina Dixon's generosity, two families have been needing to purchase beautiful places to live in the borough that are located near downtown and in train station. And whereas Nina Dixon has never sought any recognition for the time and expense dedicated to providing affordable housing in the borough for those two families. And whereas the mayor and council feel that Nina Dixon should be recognized for her selfless effort to provide housing for those two families. Now for now, therefore, I, Mary Jane Canose, do formally thank Nina Dixon for all that she has done for the borough of Burnsville and its residents.
What's your name?
Yeah, thank you.
Will you go Charlie?
Feel free. To take the same. Oh, man.
One, two, three.
Sure.
Yes, just stand on the silver back. Well, I've been introduced as Nina Dixon and I've lived in Burnsville for over 50 years. Thank you. This is an unexpected honor. Actually, the project was a team effort. Thank you, Mary Jane and John, for supporting me from the very beginning. Members of the town council for changing the zoning, which was necessary to get this done. Ed Kirwin for his help in getting the tax reviews to what I could actually sell the pump before. And the staff at CGPNH for helping me through all the bureaucracy of the affordable housing process. All your help is invaluable. And I also want to thank the Mission Outreach Group and youth group at St. John on the Mountain for the help they gave me in cleaning up the property. We pulled out a lot, boys and I did. My motivation for starting the project came from reading Richard Roffstein's book, The Color of Law, that so eloquently described the housing inequity inflicted on people of color. Thanks to COVID and the supply chain difficulties I experienced, it's taken a lot longer than I had hoped. But now I'm, we can now welcome two lovely families that have moved into Burnsville. And I hope this will provide inspiration for others also to provide affordable housing. Thank you again. It did take quite a while. I know it was frustrating at times for you. And I did go to the open house when it was done. And you did a magnificent job. It was beautiful, beautiful, beautiful apartments. A really nice piece of property too, that they could put gardens in and it's just lovely. And so thank you so much for doing that. And then our other book is for CJ Kurtz. I don't know if anybody follows his career. Do you want me to read it? Yeah, let's read it.
I think we're gonna wait.
Yeah, my comment was, so he just, just for the folks who, the NCAA final group yesterday, he had an amazing game. He was MVP, scored six goals. His team Cornell won. And they, he actually tied the NCAA single season scoring record with six goal in the game. In addition to already having the all-time scoring meter of any school ever. So it's pretty amazing. And he's most likely even the equivalent of the Heisman Trophy.
That's the toward.
Toward and work, yeah.
Stat?
Yeah, I think that'd be nice. Yeah, because then it'll have all his. I know he starts, he was the number one bid in the professional draft. And so I think his first game is Friday. So I mean, you know, we're around for.
If I have no permission, then we will update this. And then I can, I'll also wait in pain and then I'll take them over to the house.
Maybe you can zoom in or something.
Yeah, I mean, his mom was in town. I'm sure one of his brothers would come down and accept it.
All right, so he won't undo that till he gets his next decision. Great. Yes. Minutes from April 21st and the 28th for approval of the motion.
You approve the minutes from the 21st, 2025, until 28th?
All in favor? We now have an open session. If anyone from the public would like to be heard, please keep your comments to three minutes and give us your name and address. Fran, I see you getting up. I didn't know she was going first.
I'll go first and you can go outside. Hi, I'm Fran. I'm your librarian. The, are there two things I wanted to just draw your attention to? One, that our summer reading kick off is June 14th. We're having it on a weekend this year to try and catch some families that may not be able to make it during the week because of work schedules. So that'll be June 14th from 11:00 to 12:30, but it's not just for kids. Grownups can totally do summer reading too. It's a lot of fun. Becky's loaded into ReadSquared, a bunch of challenges and fun ways to earn points. There's a, I think, two raffle baskets for grownups and a few for kids and a few for teens. And it's always a lot of fun and it helps our state report if anybody participates. So if you read, please consider recording it for our summer reading in ReadSquared. And the other thing is that the Friends of the Library are going to sponsor library lunches and for the summer, starting June 16th after school lets out. A lot of public libraries offer lunches through the USDA program that sponsors also free reduced lunches for school. But you have to have a 50% need to be eligible for that. And we talked to people in Trenton and at the USDA and you're not eligible for anything. But the Friends stepped up and they had an online fundraiser. You might have seen it on the bubble. And in a week, they were able to meet their fundraising goal. And we're going to have some very simple lunches, it looks like. But if you know any community leaders who know kids who might be having some food insecurity, please tell them to stop by. It'll be first come, per served, starting at 11 on, from 11 to 1 on June 16th.
And how often are you doing the lunches?
Every day.
Every day? Wow.
Yeah, and we're partnering with the Somerset County Food Bank. Steve Cass there has been instrumental in getting us both pricing, they're letting us use their warehouse to store things that need to remain frozen. They're, they're super helpful. So they've been awesome.
Yeah.
And last thing is June 16th is the beginning of our partial closure adventure. And parts of the library will be unavailable anytime due to carpeting. You're having lots of carpeting arrived.
Exciting. Happening.
Yes. It's going to be an interesting.
Well, the good thing is people are really busy in June and, you know, doing other things. So yeah, it's going to have a slower, slower one.
We're trying to communicate a lot of shooters using the libraries and we have flyers everywhere about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who should be heard? Go for it, Karen.
Hi, Karen. Mrs. Thompson, Line Brook Road. As I'm sure most and not all the people in this room know, our esteemed mayor is about to repel the building in support of the Highlands, the New Jersey Highlands, which is a very admirable thing to do. And in checking in on her schedule, I know that it's a pretty good bet that a lot of people in this room have probably donated towards this cause and some people absolutely have. So I want to thank those people as well. And I want to just say that Mayor Canose has more than doubled her original goal of $1,000 and has raised over $2,000 thus far. More donations would be, I'm sure, gratefully accepted. On her, on her site, and certainly something that I agree with, as a mayor of a municipality in the New Jersey Highlands, Mayor Canose said that she knows how important it is to protect our water supply, our farmlands, and other natural and cultural resources. When we protect our natural resources, we're really protecting ourselves and the future. It's not just an environmental issue. It's a human thing. And so thank you, Mayor Canose, for your efforts. I just want to say that the one thing that would be better and would circulate Mayor Canose is doing this coming Saturday would be for us to move forward and to get the resolution and the ordinance ready to accept membership in the preservation aspect of the Highlands, because that will take it a step further. I know it was on the agenda briefly for March, but it hasn't reappeared. And I think that every month that passes by makes the benefit to us a little, possibly, potentially a little bit less and gives us less ability to protect what we're trying to protect by going forward with it in the first place. So I ask that the council and the mayor in the next iteration of setting up the agenda consider seriously moving forward and getting that, that ordinance ready. Because I think there's language available from the Highlands to help with the preparation of that. And thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And I know that is, thanks for bringing that up because it is the kind of the last step for our inclusion in the Highlands. Unfortunately, it kind of came at the same time that we now have this June 30th deadline to do our affordable housing plan. And Jessica Caldwell, who's sitting here, who is our planner, working on that, is also the same person who's working on getting this, the ordinance done. They have to, I think it's defined at a town center and have that all detailed out. So it's, Jessica is working on it. We'll hopefully have that soon. And she heard it first, yes. But she's done all the, all the work in a way. It's different studies we had to do than people do. So, yeah. We will go there. Anyone else in the public who should be heard? There was a clue, there's nobody soon. All right, then I will close the public session. And then I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-2020 appropriating $1,799,900 from the capital improvement fund for various equipment and improvements as listed in the 2025 municipal budget. Anyone from the public who should be heard on this ordinance? Pretty much explains it all. So I will close the public hearing. Let's start with Rich.
I move the council ordinance number 2025-2020 on final reading and adopt that as public.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rina?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Rina?
Yes.
Mr. Rina?
Yes.
I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-2021 and ordinance rezoning Lot 2 and Block 62 and amending Chapter 12, 2.2 of the Borough Land Development Regulations entitled zoning. And this is just a piece of property that was originally in the affordable housing and the owner has changed his mind so it's going back to its former zoning. Yes.
Hi. Actually, he's the owner who actually owned the property based in the gas station and the property. And he actually owns the house right next to the property. So he, he understands English, but not speak very well. I'm actually the oldest tenant who lived in that property for many years. And we want to express our, you know, opinion on this. So he feel like, you know, can you come stand over on this silver?
Can you hear it?
That way it gets. Is it the silver?
Oh, okay. He strongly feel like he against this project? Seven Charles. Eleven, seven.
Eleven. Eleven Charles.
But your.
That's your name.
Mulley line.
Oh, we can, we can give it to you. That's, that's the White House.
Yes, the monkey family. It's a, you know, it's probably directly affected. So I'm actually also their friend. They asked me to come with him. I expressed that they are strongly against this project. Mainly is the traffic issue. It's a very narrow.
There, there's no project on that property. What we're doing is, I think the owner of that piece originally wanted to do a small affordable housing project and then he decided not to.
Okay.
So all we're doing is changing zoning so that it's not for affordable housing. It's still whatever he, you know, it's just, I don't know if he's ever going to do anything with it. But he just didn't want to do affordable housing. So it's not, there's no project on the table to be developed right now.
Okay.
And if there was, it would probably go to either the zoning or the planning board.
Okay, okay, then we're okay.
So you're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for your concern. Anyone else like to be heard on this ordinance? Then I will close the public hearing. Ross?
Oh, it's, yeah, I need to do. Well, I'm sorry. All right.
Where?
No, you're.
Is right.
Yeah, it's. The, the planning board did not need the bank. So they didn't do their review on it.
So you're ready.
I move the continuing public hearing on ordinance 2025 dash 2021. Pending planning board review to a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, June 23rd, 2025.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rina?
Yes.
Mr. Rina?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Your mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
That doesn't affect anything on your hearing though, right? Like in other words, it's still the same in the pen where it's on the seventh page. Right?
Right. They just have to say, yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, they didn't give us their comments. Yeah, they didn't.
So we can't have final, it's still the same direction and just focus.
Yeah. Over the public hearing on ordinance 2025-2022 and ordinance establishing a promotion process for chief of police and supplementing and amending Chapter 2 of the Borough Code entitled Administration. Would anyone like to be heard on this ordinance?
This is the one you amended.
Oh. Right. Yes, so we're amending it. We added, you want to just quickly say what the changes were?
Yeah.
So for some of it right here, so thirdly, say this doesn't affect any of the current candidates that disturb people. We had looked at it and we thought that there were some changes that could be made. And one of them is the, I guess it's, we changed 10 years to five years for. Supervisory experience. The second one is the appointment requirement is actually a mayor appointment with council consent. So we had changed that as specified. And then graduate, graduation from advanced leadership class we need preferred rather than required. Yeah. If it makes any more sense to her. We also, although it's not in there now, we had requested mayor enlisted term. So we're changing that to mayor. And then Jack, you were going to talk about.
One of the points that's been raised, but I understand well, we know people within, so no one qualified within the department. So I know some people ask, like, why any people outside the department is because we can't understand.
So my comment on that was, does it need to be, if it's a state law, it doesn't really need to be the ordinance.
That's correct.
So we can just take it out. If the state law changes, we don't have to pay the ordinance. You can follow the state law, whatever it is. Yeah, okay. So I think we're going to take out that one line. And the internal.
Yeah.
Can I also ask a question? Sure. Just by E, you said we're making it, I'm sorry, not by one E, we're making it preferred. But under number one, it says in order to be considered for the rank of chief of police, the officer must. So maybe we should take the must out.
Yeah, just prefer. Yeah.
Or phrase it differently.
Should.
Well, in order to be considered, the officer must and then have additional.
What we could do is move, move E, yeah, like that should say, and a graduate, graduation is preferred. Like we could separate it.
It might be worth separating the musts from the nice things. Or preferred, you know? Like in other words, you can still apply if you don't have E.
Yes, right.
Number one says that the musts.
Have to make it separate.
We'll make a change in your, the public hearing is in January.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone want to be part of this? Nope, okay. And I will close the public hearing. So this one is also being read.
Yeah. Yes, Paul, can you do it?
Yep.
Jack, do I, can I just read it as is or do I have to repeat those changes? Just says a man, so that's probably fine, right?
I'm sorry, just to myself and notice if there's other changes that I can make. Can you let me say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you can just say I amended.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I move ordinance 2025-22 as amended and continue the public hearing to a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on June 23rd, 2020. So.
Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rina?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Rina?
Yeah.
Mr. Rina?
Yes. You want to move the last one? You don't have to go down it, but you can't move it. Can't even move it to move you.
I have a document, 2025-2023 bond ordinance providing for a grant. The developer for site noticed it with the construction of affordable housing in the borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating 2.7 million, therefore, and authorizing issuance of 2.570 million bonds or notes of the borough for financing sub-incorporation be introduced by title passed on for three years, published according to law, and then public hearing be scheduled for a meeting at 7:00 PM Monday, June 23rd, 2025.
So. Any comments, discussion? Do we want?
Yeah, we should talk about it, right? You want to stand? You want to start? You want to start? I can add some comments to it. All right. Jack, yeah, okay.
I can just give some background. 2017, 2018, the council decided to go to 100% affordable developments rather than a set aside.
What 100%?
2017, 2018, but in that, in that background, right? As a result, these 60 units are more affordable. If they had gone to set aside, we'd be facing the construction 300 of apartments right here.
Yeah.
It was anticipated at that point in time that the borough would have to contribute 1.94 million for the project. That has increased over time with a number of reasons, including inflation, unanticipated side conditions, property across the street, is at the loss. It had to be removed. So that 1.94 million included a spending plan. And so this, as I said, this is a decrease over time. But all this was anticipated and as a result, there are 60 units being built out of 300.
I have a little bit more if anyone. So as we discussed in previous meetings, the original request was shortfall of $5 million. And through RPM, working with their inside people, they were able to get that down. And in addition, they have some changes to the plan that would take about $800,000 off. That's changed it to material, you know, the outside of the buildings. And then what we call targeted demolition, with the, I would describe, they would take off another $719,791 with friends. The, or their shortfall that we're making up for to $2,641,000. So I wanted to talk about the demolition a little bit because it sounds scary for a period. But I was pleasantly surprised with the information that we got. Blasting, if it was, you know, come a long way. So the city across the street, like Jack mentioned, it's not really the building, it's a lot of rock. And so RPM said that if we allow the demolition, the targeted demolition or blasting to occur to split the rock included in soil, that did reduce by the amount of maintenance of the 1,300,000 dollars. So we considered it because it's significant. So we got more information. So the blasting went down. Holes are drilled and ordinance is placing the holes, which are covered with dirt or mats. And then warning sirens play and the blast is initiated. Nothing becomes airborne. And so we are only two times per week, once per day, two times a week over a period of eight weeks. So if you do math, that would be 16 times over a period of two months. The vibrations from the blast should not be felt beyond the 100-foot radius. They'd be monitored at the two closest structures. And the contractor would set up vibration monitor, which should not exceed 0.6 peach participle velocity per inches per second. So what that means is that the vibration that is coming out is slamming a door or fireworks at 1,500 feet per year. This is all state regulated and the company they're hiring is regulated and insured. The note, the resident of the 200 feet of the site across the street would be notified with certified letter. And this would only happen until the fall. The note, the resident of the two hundred feet of the site across the street would be notified with certified letter, and this would not be happening until the fall, so, um. The letters won't go out for a bit. Uh, but they would get the letters and then they would be asked for their preferences for a blast notification. So the blasting will be done at eight thirty, three thirty. Um, each day, uh, on the day of the year, and they, so people will be asked for their preference, whether it be text, phone, um, or other. Uh, notification, and they will get a notification one hour prior to the blast. So if you had a dog, could go take the dog out for a ride or something to be enough notice, um. And then we're going to put on our, on our website and, you know, Facebook page that. This is going to happen, we'll probably not be able to put out, like a blast will happen in an hour, but, um, you know, they're able to do it. Uh, there is, there will be a pre-construction, uh, survey for existing structure and there should be no impact on surrounding buildings. And like I said, it is heavily governed by the state and legal technology, uh, you know, it has definitely improved.
I will remember the days of blasting at the quarry. It's, it's got to be like that, yeah, nothing like that. Yeah, where the whole town would shake.
Okay, keep going, stuff with it. So thank you, Nancy. I, I just, um, chair the finance committee, don't want to lose a dollar and cents of this whole thing to the bottom line. And rightly so, residents will be, have interest in targeted demolition, and we should put all the information of Nancy rightly detailed out there. But if you just think about, like, I don't want to get lost with what Nancy had said. If this, I, the council made an agreement, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, to fund, um. Affordable housing for these scattered sites, they thought it'd be one point nine million, we got the bill this year, the bill was five million dollars, right? And think about with an affordable housing fund of just over a million. And, uh, what that would have done, just had a budget hearing, what that would have done to our budget if we had, um, go out and bond for that entire amount. Um, I really want to credit Nancy, the borough administrator and Jack, because they really went to work with council's guidance. And that number that you're seeing now, the two point six million, you could imagine how much that work that took to get it down from five million to two point six million. There was aspects that Nancy talked about, the demolition and the changes to the aesthetics that we agreed to, but we also took the time. Asked for the financial documents, which they, um, very kindly handed over, but we had them all audited. Right? And then these were a series of negotiations and discussions over many months that got us to the two point six million. And if you think about the affordable housing, number, the number that I just articulated, plus more funds that should be coming into that account. In the end, probably only half the bond for a minimum amount, actually.
Yeah.
Which could be anywhere, you know, depending on what happened, five hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, which is much more. Powerful for the borough than the original four million dollar delta that we were going to have there. So I don't want it to get lost because there's a lot of work that went to really cut that bill in half. Thanks to the partnership we had with RPM and kind of having a really honest conversation, but it's going to be much more manageable, the borough finances.
Wanted to add, I think it's a question, I think you mentioned that we were also, we also reached cap that amount?
Yes.
I think the original agreement was on cap.
That's correct.
Not only did you get the amount down, but we don't have to sit here wringing our hands worrying that, oh, they're going to come back in a year with another million dollar or twice or something.
Yeah.
And, and on top of that, if it's blasting, demolition work ends up being less than seven hundred thousand, we'll get that money back. And we give the financial avenue for us to help we get money back as well. And Jack and I have been meeting with RPM every two weeks for the last.
Hundred years.
Yeah. But, um. And then, uh, Dan Maranelle from, um, and. And so, and then.
And there.
Uh, and then he's been very, yeah, we have, he was here for the, um. Did the announcement pilot for, uh, for the common. And so he's been a great help from the financial perspective, and RPM's been, you know, been very supportive.
Well, and I think the other thing that shouldn't get lost is the difference in how many new homes we're going to end up with, uh, compared to, if you've noticed around, surrounding us. So many big developments going up because they are letting builders build their affordable housing, and in order to do that, you have to get. Quite a few extra market units, and, you know, with, with our small community, we were trying to only build what we needed to build and to build it, um. Within the downtown, so they're not set aside and everybody knows that's the, you know, and it's part of the, to become part of the community. Um, so we had these scattered sites that fit better into what our downtown looks like than having something off in the woods.
Thank you for all the work.
All right, so we're, so we move the ordinance. Any other comments, honey? All right, um, did I get a second?
No, I seconded it.
You can all in favor?
Not very much.
You want to abstain, sure.
Yeah.
Only due to the fact that I'm employed in an industry that has a conflict with interest for issuing bonds.
Well, now we have resolutions twenty five ninety four and twenty five one oh eight, um. I don't think there's anything here that we haven't discussed.
I, I did have, I did have a question.
Um, oh, okay.
Um, game, uh. Type one O one. Right. Chamber of, a full management company. This is for up to, you know, fifty twenty thousand dollars. I wanted to just make it clear what this is. It is to, uh, paper lifeguard for the swim team for twelve months and other parties. And this was not specificated, uh, the right. Departments did not know that they had to provide this prior to the baseball now. Um, but I also want to point out that that would be offset income, because those are all comparable event.
Right.
And then the second one is, uh, one O six, uh, set in school fees. Uh, there are two different fees, uh, the school has an emergency target that they'll be doing, uh, over the month of June. That is going to cost, um, posing two hundred dollars an hour, that covers the lifeguards, because the pool is closed at the time, so they'll be the whole amount there. So they have to bear the whole front of that, but then when the private parties have been during the time that the pool is open. It would all be a hundred dollars an hour, which offsets additional responsibility on the lifeguard plus all you would guess that they're not there.
Okay, did we get the, um. It's going to.
Notable, possible clearance, so I was going to say that has to be moved, just push that off, could you?
Take that one out?
Yeah.
You see, it's a, it's a, it's a, um. Anything, someone. Somebody like, who, Christine, we can do that.
Twenty five, twenty four. Two twenty five, it's one rule, but not one five. Right?
Yeah.
Being, being adopted.
So. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse?
Yeah.
Mr. Vayner? Yeah, it's Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Zadovina?
Yes.
All right, um, mayor update. I attended the intergenerational prom on May second, which is always a fun event, um, that the. Students put on for seniors living in the school district, so, um, thank you to all the people that worked on that. Uh, we did have Rich and I and Nancy met with, um, and been on the real team to talk about Quimby and see where we're going from here, so we were waiting for them to get back to us. Uh, so hopefully we'll have something for you soon on that. Um, and I had a safety campaign committee meeting with Captain Nutella and we're working on some initiatives. To try and slow down distracted driving and people speeding in town. Um, the Somerset, Somerset Hills Educational Foundation had a partnership event where they invited several businesses and myself. Were kind of a mixer because they're looking, they are really doing a good job. This foundation, a lot of fundraising and now trying to get going with the businesses involved through the school events and projects. Uh, I attended May Day at the turf field for the mountain years, I think that was a pretty successful. Beer garden was a big success, but anyway, Tino was there, yeah. No, I think they were doing, yeah. Um, Nancy and I had a meeting with Anthony Davis, who's the producer for Viewpoint, which is a, had a podcast hosted by Dennis Quaid.
Uh, it's done, it's done.
No, it's TV show, yes. On PBS, and we had an interview with him, they were looking for small towns that have business opportunities and so. Yeah, I haven't heard that, don't know if we're going to be featured, but it was kind of a fun thing, and I loved Dennis Quaid. We'll see, um, but it was nice that we each made the list of people that he wanted to talk to, so. Um, I attended last week's New Jersey conference at mayor's conference, um, the title was from State Street to Main Street. Uh, it was one of the best ones they've had that I've been to, uh, we had sessions on A I media relations, legislative issues. Um, new revenue sources, they had all the gubernatorial. Most of the gubernatorial candidates, um, in a, in a panel discussion. Um, they also had governor, former governor Christie and De Francesco, Cesco. Um, doing a, a Q and A, which was really, you know, in, in the state relationship with mayors, so it was breakhoppers. Uh, we had another affordable housing committee meeting, and Jessica is going to help us have that. Yesterday, we had a fabulous Memorial Day parade, I know Spurs Balloons covered every town but ours, but that's okay. They did have a picture of our speaker, we got a picture of, uh, Taylor, Taylor Wong. Who did a great job and it was, it was such a gorgeous day and I, and I think that's the biggest crowd I've ever seen on Cylon, so. Thank you all for attending. Um, and then as Carrie mentioned, and actually I'm doing it Friday, because Friday is the mayor's challenge, so they asked mayors to. You know, take the challenge, so four o'clock on Friday, I'm going over the edge of the park building, net of ants. Twenty one stories. If I'm not back. Yes.
Yeah.
My husband, she said he's gonna, he's coming with a mop and a sponge. But, yeah, so thank you for mentioning that, just, I think it'll be fun, I'd say, um, also the mayor from. Town is doing, and I think the Mars Town Mayor. Good much of us. But that's where it is. So, yeah, hopefully it will rain. And that's my report. Uh, administrator's report.
Yes, sir. And, um, first, I've got the walking path at the fall ground. Unfortunately, the virus is slower than we had anticipated, I hope. Um, the site has been empty for several hours, and we should have been there. Um, but wasn't. So we told him that, uh, it may be substantially complete for graduations of seventeen, the, and our graduation. Um, but the engineer is exploring all the options that are legally available. And this is, as we have repeatedly said, the down item, the load's been.
Yeah, they just didn't come, you know, and I think what we found, when you do that. What a lot of these contractors do is they accept several jobs, and then they start yours, and then they go and start another one, then they come back and they're in, and they have multiple projects going. Because it's less expensive for them and they, you know, they done.
Right, exactly.
And then everybody suffers because they never finish them.
And so, uh, there was someone today, and they're supposed to, who said they were working on that little dock.
That's ours.
Exactly, yeah, but, um, he's going to look at those, see, and see how long it, so. So, um, you know, that, that we have to finish and we'll come in the following year, which, yeah, so. Um, and also nothing against, uh, Van Cleve or Joe, but, you know, that was a sudden benefit of having Tony here, you know, to be on every single day. If he, if he, um. But, um, good news, farmer's market is opening Saturday, twenty nine one. And, uh, I know we've cut his main officer, Chuck Hopey there, which is old, very comfortable there. Um, with returning vendors, they want, um, I actually, uh. Recruited from, um. Scott Plains, apparently there is no more room in Scott Plains Farmer's Market, and so this hot sauce vendor. Was open, so I kind of, yeah, that's what's come here, so it's, yeah, awesome, yeah, they won't, maybe they won't be here for a few days, I'm going to be back. So, with the part of that, um. I did want to talk about, uh, some of you who were here will remember that a couple of years ago, we got a grant, two dollars, five one number, down here. Um, project that, you know, started and other tax expense. But there is a more immediate need, uh, for the money, and we believe that the sidewalk in front of the train station is a much more urgent, um. Repair, and so we'd like to ask the O Ts to allow us to, uh, reallocate, repurpose the grant. And use it for the train station sidewalk. Um, and I'll talk about the line through it too, both sides of the wall, not the line at the train station. Um, so we've done some rough calculations and we estimate that that will cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars, but the grant is for two hundred and twenty five thousand. So we'd like to add in the new sidewalk on Child Road that you had already approved. Um, in fact, like you'll remember that the couch is still on crosswalks, and ramps and, uh, a flashing beacon, and then we're putting sidewalks on a portion of it. From two, um, not from two or two, but. It ends at the Somerset Hills kind of association entrance and goes back to where the sidewalk already exists. Um, you just adopted the capital, and so we can't actually put a hundred thousand dollars in there, we estimated it costs a hundred and ten. Um, so if you agree with this and combine projects and D O T allows us to do that, and we can save that hundred thousand dollars. Use the grant money for it. Um, both of the projects would increase pedestrian safety, um, they're two pretty busy areas. Uh, I'm guessing where there's affordable housing, uh. Need a Dixon, how does our, if those have, if those kids are in school, they're, if they cross here, I'm not sure, but that'd be a way to the high school, or that sidewalk. So there's a, a lot of kids from, take the train from Bar Hills and. Um, Peepack and Bedminster to come to the high school, so, you know, to increase the safety on the sidewalk. People going to our downtown vendors, um, you know, it's in bad shape.
Yeah, actually, I believe it was Charlie who worked my attention some days from two years ago, didn't you, Charlie?
Burger down, fourth.
If.
All of the bull's brick, okay.
The, so we started being replaced and, and where there's, um, caver. And is that, it's at the end of the water?
Yeah, so, so it'll all be consistent, instead of, it's just chopped up different things.
Although, if you, the caver that they have, um, you know, Kevin McDonald, that's one of the biggest regrets, because, so, yeah. Yeah, so if you agree, we'll apply to the future modification.
Yeah, we'll, we'll never get the other one done in time, I mean.
We're going to get it, I'm sad, in fact, we, if they're okay and they agree with modification, then, um. Um. Next month, we would ask you to do a resolution to apply for a six month extension. I, I feel like we can get these two projects done, but an extra six months will be helpful, because I don't know how long their grant takes to decide on a modification.
Hmm.
So.
So, are we going to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think for the Child's, uh, project, because there are a few new members of council, that's what Russell was talking about. Did we have a map of that last year? Might be good if you share it, I think it was.
Yeah.
Richard Ross.
Yeah, we made.
Jack, you didn't have. Because I think it was before you.
Very.
So, true, please. Appreciate it.
Okay, and then, uh. The mayor's suspension, we had a free, we wanted the event, so I just wanted to.
Thank you for being there.
Yeah.
Yes, because my friend should be there, um, I just want to thank the, obviously, the V F W, you know, the. Yes, because my friend should be there. Um I just want to thank the, obviously the VFW and all the veterans who were uh not only for coming, but for their service. Um Tom Sylvia, who did work, then the recreation director, Kevin Murray, the D W director, Bob Patel, who before him couldn't happen without them, like the D W, they know where things go, they bought the flags, they, they blocked the road. Um and and Zach Wolfchek was our uh announcer, the member of D W, the CHM to be.
Just tell them it's Kenos, not Kenaus. News, I think he said canoes.
Maybe it's not the suit.
They have to do talent, was afraid unless he gave uh four million. And Richard, who worked with DOT, they like get the permits, build the road. And our heart, heartland, Mandem probably thought they had a nice turnout, all participating, so. It was great, like you said, I think it was the biggest crowd. This is my third parade that I've been to here and still had the biggest uh participant last year, but.
Yeah.
And then the last thing I want to say is that the pool opened Saturday, but it was terrible weather, so Saturday, only three people went and Sunday, nobody went and Monday, thirty eight people. I kind of picked up the thirteen because we know how many people that's like, that's the one.
But I'm telling you, it's, the main streets were completely empty. So it's good.
Yeah, thirty people were there. I mean, this coming week is so good, but eventually people start going, so they, recreation and D W were really hard to um you know, get the full and shape and for every you, you as a member, look at the women's challenge because they actually tied, you know, old fashioned courage, because of the wonky things because they're behind the woman. And it's just nice, ready, and we, and you know, it's really good.
Just one thing on the, on the farming market, it's now, uh recreation is now doing the work with the vendors and doing some of the all the background work and um because uh English, Madeline English had to, you know, she wanted to retire. Uh so she is really handling that volunteers on Saturdays and making sure that there's people there and has a good group of volunteers, so I'm sitting right here. And uh but Tom has, has put in a lot of time and effort still here in getting it organized and taking over that. He spent a lot of time with Madeline. And I think uh he gets a lot of credit for working on that at the same time.
Yeah.
And the other, the other thing, you know, that he didn't study it on the five perimeter where mine mound, Clermont and with Sandy, Sandy all come together. So long ago, we had uh Rogers and State Streets or whatever come out and do a whole plan and then it went to the county engineer and it's been there for a very long time. So I did, one of the commissioners was at the mayor's conference, so I did speak to her directly and hopefully we'll work that along. Because the county has to approve it. I think they have to pay for the, whatever the signage and funding that we wanted there, so. Because that intersection is just the worst. All right, uh I need a motion to accept the monthly reports. Um, I'll second. All in favor? Uh there's some business, I don't think we had any points planned this. Any unfinished business? We have some new business. Uh this, these are all the things we have to do for RPM, right?
Yes.
Convey the properties. We can do that by resolution, so that's.
Yes.
Okay, but we do them all separately, so um, let's see, where did we leave off? Jack?
I moved that resolution by that, all right, Jackson?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Creed?
Yes.
Mr. Banner?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Banner?
Yes.
Mr. Gass, right now?
Yes.
Um next for a resolution, oh, this is uh, yeah. Because uh the chief's retirement date has changed, so we're no longer needing a officer December as of June first.
Yeah, so it, it is delayed. Uh we're hoping, you know, just a month or two to do our whole opening division of um pensions. So we reworded the resolution just to say that um Captain Nutella will become officer in charge of common teacher retirement, so that doesn't date.
That's good, there can, yeah, perfect. All right, back to you, Richard.
Twenty five death one, and the adopt.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zadoreno?
Yes.
Mr. Banner? Your trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yeah.
Your narrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Creed?
All right, we have another open session if anyone in the public would like to be heard. Yeah.
Hi, it's Carrie, I'm open again, I'm Bill Ruth. Final question because it seemed, and I could be just wrong on the way things work. Some of the um ordinances that were introduced, you asked whether anybody would like to be heard on them. But then I was learning a lot of new information about the um the bond issue and there was no, you didn't ask whether we could, if we had any questions or anything to say on it. So we, maybe we missed that or it's just not allowed, but some questions arose, there's things that I wanted to.
Oh, you know, I think we, we delayed it till, we're carrying it over till June.
I can't make that meeting, it would be possible, but I have a couple of questions to the things that you said today.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, first thing that came to mind when I heard about the targeted um demolition was the sewer directly across the street. So I mean, there was a lot of discussion about how the buildings were going to be monitored. That would be, that'd be the most worried about because it, it's ours and it's, it's really critical to our functioning, so. Yeah, so um are there any special um inspections that are going to be taking place just to make sure that whatever they're doing with the rocks across the way don't impact that sewer, you know, that, that is our concern. Um secondly, the changes to the aesthetics on the, the building that's going to be on mine work road, I just wanted to be out there.
It's, I think, the bad choice.
Material might be a better word. Then changes, wait, I would say the aesthetic.
No, they're not changing the um, the design. They're using a different material that looks the same, but doesn't.
So we, we, because there was a lot of discussion about trying to make that building more attractive.
Yes.
And so I would like to not lose that if possible within the.
Yeah, if we're not, it was not the look, it was simply, because I think they were trying to match the same color, but of a different material that looks the same, but will possibly.
So all the work.
Yeah.
That building is.
No, because we'd have to go back and go through the whole.
Okay, okay. Um and then thirdly, just um to go back, it seems like we owe, we, we gave them the land.
Correct.
Because it was our land and that was part of the deal. Then on top of that, we owed them and we knew we were going to owe them a contribution that we thought was going to be one point nine four million.
Right.
But for whatever reason, we can have a cap on that. And then a lot of time went by and they had the ability, because there was no cap, to come and say, well, now we're at five million dollars. And then everybody got to work to try to make that less. Um should there have been a cap in the first place on that?
Previous council, previous mayor, can't answer for them.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
But, yeah.
Well, but there's going to be hopefully more, more deals to, to knock out builders remedy. And so we'll know on the front end, we discount some fair.
But just to that, I mean, you're right, we gave them the land. And don't know why, I mean, again, none of us wrong there at that time, but like, don't know why we would then also paid for the submission amount to actually have a bill. So that was part of when we got the information, part of our own surprises as well.
Yeah. Okay, and then lastly, just something that you said out, because you were talking about, you, you, you were, you were getting a lot of information out very quickly and trying to, you know, be as uh good with time as possible. But I thought you said that it seemed like we might only need to bond for six hundred thousand to a million dollars. Could you run through the reasoning on it?
Yeah, there's already a million dollars, but what, what's the exact amount on the trust fund?
It's uh one point one.
One point one, right. So one point one million, we, it's smart to bond for the full amount right now. We don't ever have to spend that if we need it. Um, we had other, obviously, like, there's an affordable housing um payment as part of Palmer Project, if that does go through. Uh so if we do get additional affordable housing funds inside of that affordable housing fund, additional money to the affordable housing fund, that would then raise the money, it would raise that amount that's in it that we could then pay towards this.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's only have the.
Also, the, the building next to the firehouse, they, they are making a contribution as well, one is under.
Right, now it's, it's being done, but, but every time we need to pull from that, we, we lose from our trust fund and things that we're hoping to be able to buy land and we.
No, different trust fund.
No, no, yeah, no, this is affordable housing trust fund.
Yeah, enough space. No, I know, it's, that's what we had the affordable housing trust fund that we, if we want to keep ha, from having buildings, we would use that to buy land, right? And land is very expensive and some, sometimes, you know, like, it, it's just like there's, there's going to be a hole there because, because of the fact that it wasn't planned before.
It's your legislators.
Yeah. Okay, um so you think that, that we might not have to pull on all of that? And I think there was one other thing. I'm just trying to build this. Um, no, I guess, I mean, that's, that's primarily.
No, those are good questions. Thank you for bringing them.
Yeah.
And there will be, well, you're not going to be here, but you know, we may hear other things from the public in June as well. All right, where are we? Um, anyone else in the public? Yeah, okay, so then we are at one session. Do you have a motion for executive session? Almost during the executive session, to consider personnel matters and attorney finding programs, and we will not be coming back out.
No, we're good, you're good, we're good.
Okay.
All right.
All right, all in favor? Thank you.